Well, welcome everyone. I'm calling to order the common council of the city of Gladstone for January 13th, 2015. It is now 7:37 in the evening. Uh, roll call please.
Counselor Nelson.
Here.
Counselor Mercerow.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sickman.
Here.
Counselor McMahon.
Here.
Counselor Reiser.
Here.
Mayor Jacobal. Here. Uh, please join me in the flag salute, folks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any business from the audience at this time? Okay. Moving right along, we're going to, uh, now go to the consent agenda, um, and we need to have any-
Mr. Mayor, um, I wanted to point out that, uh, we did find some typos in the minutes as pointed out by Counselor Sickman. Uh, I provided those by email and have them in front of you right now. Um, also there was a, uh, update to the project list, small update to the project list, uh, that was also emailed out and in front of you at this time. And I did want to point out, uh, one item that appears in the claims, and it is, unfortunately, it's not numbered like the rest of the packet, but under the outstanding invoices, page two, there's a claim for Brown and Caldwell in the amount of $2,138. The reason that is in there, that is not on the master plan's contract. This is for our separate contract that we have, uh, previously discussed. Uh, it's in relation to our stormwater permit and work they've done on that. I've, uh, discussed it with the city attorney, and we don't have legal recourse to hold back that payment, uh, so at this time I'm requesting city council authorize that payment. Uh, they're for services that have already been rendered in relation to reporting on our annual, uh, stormwater, uh, permit. The, uh, the negotiation on the, uh, the other item continues. I have a meeting tomorrow morning on the master plans. But I, I wanted to, uh, point that out so there is no question as to why those invoices are being requested to be paid.
All right, any, any items want to be pulled from the consent agenda for any reason? Any discussions needed?
I have a question in the back.
I'm sorry, Stan Monte, Fire Department.
Excuse me? Yeah, 'cause nobody, they'll be, not be able to hear that. Sorry, Stan.
Stan Monte, uh, Chief Gladstone Fire. It was brought to me before this meeting, a question on page 110 to 111. There was evidently a motion in regards to, uh, time off after the holidays. Could I get a clarification of what that motion was?
I'm sorry, what, page 110?
That'd be on the, that'd-
Page 110.
That'd be on the minutes in regards to, uh, the, uh, half-days, uh, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
Yeah.
And, so-
Yeah, I can read it, but it's still a little ambiguous. I've just heard-
Oh, no, no, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not- I'm not attempting to answer your question. I was just trying to help as to what the, the situation was.
Right, so, uh, so the question was put to council. Uh, in the past, the city has closed, uh, offices for half-days on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Uh, if there was staff present and able to work to keep the facility open, we, we would do that, and I believe we did that this year. Um, the library did close a half-day, uh, but basically it was to give that option. If the employees were to take half a day off, uh, they'd have to use accrued time.
So it's to allow them to take that time off if they want to?
Yes.
So, okay, so has, nothing changed then?
Right.
Okay. I just was having a hard time figuring out what the motion actually was.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda with the, uh, changes that Pete has brought forward.
A second. Uh, voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved with the amendment. Um, we'll move down to correspondence now. We received a letter from a business owner regarding, uh, business license fees. My only comment on this is, uh, and I'd like the city, the council to, uh, allow me to make a phone call back to Ms. High, just to have a conversation with her, to let her know we hear her concerns, uh, and that we are probably going to have a discussion there sometime in February, maybe even in March about fees and notifications and, uh, try to clean this up a little bit, if everybody's okay with me making the phone call.
I think it's a great idea, for sure.
And I think, uh, I did do just a quick little check. Oregon City charges $120, and this was just on the computer for non-resident. Gladstone was $125. West Lynn was fairly inexpensive at 54. Milwaukee was $121, and Happy Valley was $100, so we're not-
She always mentioned last, a couple days ago, like, uh, West Lynn, they've got a street fee also added to it, so-
And I think part of what, uh, from what I remember when this all came up a couple months ago was that our rates hadn't changed in, how long, Jolene, do you think?
Twenty, 25 years.
So I think maybe the only thing was they were a little surprised that it went from 30 to 120, but in 20 years, it's probably gone up way more than that, so I think the fee is appropriate.
Yeah. Well, that's, this, like I said, that's a discussion we'll have at, you know, another council meeting, hopefully in February, March-ish, uh, to discuss where we're at with it, but at least for today, I'd like to call her and just let her know we hear her complaint and, uh, gonna do something about it or talk about it if we're not.
Perfect.
All right, let's move down to the regular agenda. Um, item number six, which is, uh, appointments to the planning commission. There's two applications received, two vacant positions.
Right. Mr. Mayor, and I would also request that city council, uh, determine which applicant, if both are appointed, which applicant would be in which term? They both have different expiration dates.
The, uh, the one who has been a Gladstone resident the longest would be my, uh, my choice for the longest term.
I'd like to do whoever applied first, but I couldn't quite tell from the, the file here which one was first.
If I'm not mistaken, I think, uh-
I think Elliot says looking at it as a rough guess, I'm not sure.
He's the one that did apply first. And they both, however, had to apply two or three times before they could chance. I'm glad they did.
Yeah, and, uh- I agree, I'm glad they came back.
Mr. DeAlphwell also asked me to inform city council that he's unable to be here this evening. Uh, it's not that he was not interested in being here, he had some personal business that he had to attend to.
All right. I'm waiting for a motion to assign one person the term and-
I'd make a motion that we assign the, uh, resident with, uh, has been in the city the longest to the longest term of planning commission. I'll second that.
All right. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, nobody?
And which one would that be?
So that would be, according to this, Mr., I can't even say the name. Say it for me.
DeAlphwell?
DeAlphwell. Mr. DeAlphwell will be the one with the term that expires the latest.
And that would be December 31st, 2016.
And Mr. Veezy would be remaining.
Right, end of this year, I believe.
Right, December 31st, 2015.
Yeah, so it'd be end of this year. We should have a motion officially appointing, uh, Mr. Veezy as well. Okay. Yeah, just to make that official for the record that he was actually appointed.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Veezy to the planning commission term that expires 12/31/15.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I would like to thank both applicants for being so diligent and staying with this. I know both of them have applied several times for these same positions, um, so thank you for staying with it, and welcome aboard.
For sure.
Okay, moving to item number seven, an ordinance 1454, amending chapter 7.52 of the Gladstone Municipal Code relating to signs in the public right-of-way.
Okay, um, honorable mayor and city councillors, tonight we'll have a, uh, a hearing to consider this ordinance, ordinance, uh, 1454. Uh, I'm gonna read through some of the, uh, statements that I have to make according to Oregon law, and then I'll get into the, the staff report. I'll present that to you tonight, uh, such as it is. So first I want to call for any abstentions. Are there any city councillors that want to abstain, uh, for personal reasons, uh, from this matter tonight or feel they have to? Seeing none, I'll next call for any conflicts of interest from city councillors. What I mean by that is whether any of you believe that, uh, this ordinance could affect you in a, in a financial way, either to your benefit or to your detriment. I'm gonna present the staff report, and once I'm done with that, I will, uh, call for any public testimony on the ordinance. I'll do a brief recap based on any testimony, and then I will ask the council to, uh, either close or continue the public hearing. You would discuss what you think about the ordinance, and then if you get to that point tonight, uh, I would ask that you call for at least the first reading, uh, and if that's a unanimous reading, then you are also able to go ahead and have the, the second and final reading tonight. Staff report-wise, which is, I think, fairly straightforward. We had a request, the city had a request, uh, months ago now, uh, kind of the beginning of the, uh, the high school football season, and it was from, uh, the, the boosters, uh, for the Gladstone High School, and they were hoping to have, um, some, um, signs, basically, uh, that would be your classic sort of, um, signs promoting Gladstone football and Gladstone sports, and, and put them on PGE polls, utility polls on Portland Avenue. And they went ahead and, you know, naturally thought, well, that isn't any big deal, and, and I think got maybe a little bit ahead of themselves and, and realized, uh, once they started talking with some city officials that technically at that point the code didn't allow that to happen. Uh, it, it, uh, basically did say that signs on utility polls were prohibited. So, we talked about it, uh, the council expressed a desire to have the planning commission look at it, consider a text amendment to the code that would allow this. Uh, we had that hearing, uh, and, uh, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation to you to, um, amend the sign code to allow that to happen. Basically, uh, it's not a huge amount of changes here. Uh, I've presented you with a copy of the, uh, the marked-up version of the code, and really the changes are on 7-6 and 7-7 of your packet. And that, that really, the, the main thing that it does is, is say, uh, on 7.7, that, uh, signs on utility polls are generally still going to be prohibited unless the poll's owner approves in writing, and that the sign is otherwise allowed, uh, in accordance with the chapter. Uh, there's another amendment made on 7.6 that basically says, uh, right now the only signs that are allowed in the right-of-way are those that are, that are government-owned, so, you know, either it's ODOT or the city or something like that. Uh, so this basically, uh, would expand, um, the ability for the city to place such signs on anybody's behalf. In this case, it would be on behalf of the boosters, uh, but it doesn't, it's not limited to that. I want to make that clear. Um, uh, on those polls, as long as, in this case, PGE has approved in writing, uh, to do that. And they could stay up indefinitely, they could stay up, you know, for a week. Uh, that's really up to you and whomever would be requesting a sign go on those polls. Whenever, well, this is something I talked about initially and certainly talked about with the, with the planning commission as well, uh, Oregon has a very, very, um, sign codes are tricky in Oregon, uh, trickier than they are in most parts of the country, and the biggest reason for that is the, the way that the Oregon Supreme Court has interpreted Oregon's constitution and its, its guarantee of, of freedom of expression and speech. And in a nutshell, we can't regulate signs under the Oregon constitution on the basis of their content, uh, and that's very broadly, uh, interpreted. So, you know, anything that would, I, I can't write a code that would say, uh, you know, that the, the school district gets to place signs, um, promoting, you know, athletic events at the school. That's, that's a content-based distinction, and that would, that would be unconstitutional in Oregon. So it's, it's done in a manner, and I, I, again, I want to make this clear, that it's not limited to just those types of signs. You, as the, as the sort of the owner or the controller of, of the right-of-way, would obviously have the ability to say yes or no to a proposal, but, um, it, it's not written in a way that it would, the only thing that would, that could ever be put on those signs would be, uh, things that would be affiliated with, uh, the, the high school's athletics. Um, and that's just a reality of the law, basically. So, as I said, it's not, it's not terribly complicated. Uh, it's, it's narrow in the changes that it makes, and it would allow, uh, consistent with the direction we received from, uh, the former council, um, to have those, um, banners or signs on utility polls, um, presumably at this point now for, for next season. Happy to take any questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
One is just a comment. Um, on future staff reports like this, could you help us just a little bit? We've got 13 pages-
Yes.
-that I read through, and I found four changes on two pages. It would, it would help if in the staff report, it would, uh, give us some hint of where to look. I do appreciate having the old code, the entire code, so you can take it in context. So, um, the other part of that is, without that, I was a little confused, because my assumption is anything with a strike-through was removed.
Mm-hmm.
Anything underlined was, uh, was added.
Correct.
And then all of the headings throughout the entire chapter are underlined.
Correct, of course. There's a lot of them underlined. You're right, you're right. Good point, good point.
So, what I'm seeing in this, in the, uh, proposal is, there is a vertical line on the left margin where the changes are, and there are four of them-
Correct.
-on those two pages, and that's it?
Correct.
Okay. Um, is there a reason, it looks like, um, on 7-6, you added F-
Mm-hmm.
-but it appears to be the exact same thing as the B above it. Is there a reason we added a complete new rather than just adding the rest of that paragraph to that sentence, to that, to B?
It, it could be done that way. I wanted to make it very clear that, because if you read the beginning of, of subsection 1, uh, these signs don't require a permit, but they otherwise have to conform to the chapter's standards. So, one of the things that we discussed, the planning commission, and sort of anticipated this before that even, was just, you know, you have a number of, of restrictions about number and size, uh, duration with respect to signs, and I wanted to make it clear that, that, uh, with respect to signs that are government-owned in the right-of-way, that those, those matters are off the table. It, it could be put under B, you're right, uh, and I don't have any problem, you can certainly make that change administratively.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't really care. I was just wondering if it was something different.
Yeah, the reason I put it separately was to make it, in my mind, and the way I read codes, abundantly clear that, that for those types of signs, there are still certain code criteria that would apply, height, lighting, et cetera, but, uh, with respect to, you know, size, number, and location, they aren't applicable. I just thought it called it out a little bit better, but I, I have no problem moving it to B. It actually, uh, it applies to every one of them, so there's no reason to have it be separate.
The only other question I had is, um, we've used the word "government" in here.
Mm-hmm.
I believe we're trying to keep control of these signs so we can say when they come up, when they go down. Um, would, would "city" be a better word than "government"? Because "government" could be about anybody.
Uh, there is a reason, uh, the biggest reason for keeping it a little broader than "city" is just to clarify that there may be, county could have a role in, in having some signage in the right-of-way. Basically, public entities are, who I believe have the right to place signs in the right-of-way. That wouldn't necessarily be limited to the city. You could have, uh, ODOT on McLaughlin, you could have, so-
Haven't they always had that right, though?
Well, they do, uh, you know, they, they would claim that since it's our right-of-way, we can do whatever we want. Um, we've actually advocated in, not in Gladstone, but in other communities, that that is true. You have the right to control the right-of-way, you can, you know, obviously spacing standards and access standards, but when it comes to something like signage, uh, the city has a role in regulating that. So what I, the reason I've used "government" is just to, to make it clear that, and when we went through this process back in 2005 or '06, there wasn't a strong desire to have the city getting into the minutia of what ODOT might want to do with the sign on, on McLaughlin, but we did want to make it clear that it's public entities that are the ones that have the right to do that. Um, so I would be, I would keep it as government-owned or maintained. It, it provides us a little more flexibility, and you're not just limiting it to one entity, but rather, rather, potentially several.
And I would, I, I was looking at it from the standpoint of, this was, came forward because of the booster's request-
Mm-hmm.
-for some banners to hang off of the signs. If we started hanging banners off of the sign down our main street, another government entity may decide, well, we want to hang banners on those signs as well, or on those poles as well, and the city would not have any control of any government banners that went up. And that was the only reason I was questioning it, is if, if it said "city" in this section, would it make a difference where, if it was a city-owned, maintained, or, um, yeah, city-owned or maintained, then the city would have the right to say, it can, we're gonna put it up for this long, and we're gonna take it down and replace it with something else?
They would still have the right to put up, the only thing that, that if you had "city" instead of "government" in subsection F, then city-owned or maintained signs wouldn't be subject to-
Okay.
-number, size, or location. It wouldn't affect the right of any of those other governments to put up-
Okay.
-signs they want. So, I personally don't think that's much of a risk, but I, I think, you know, if, if the council feels strongly enough about it, we certainly could, um, make some tweaks to that to... I, I just sort of thought what's, in, in an attempt to keep it consistent with how the code currently reads, you know, what's good for us should be good for other government entities that we work with.
Okay.
But that's really a policy call for you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I was on the, uh, planning commission when this came before it, and I asked the same question there. I'd like to ask it again.
Yeah.
Uh, does anything here, any of these changes, are they gonna limit our ability to enforce our sign code anywhere else, especially in our commercial areas?
No, I don't think it will. I think that, uh, again, the sign code operates, and we, we, you know, for those of you who, who may not know or remember, that, you know, there was a, back in, in, I don't know, 2006, 2005, 2006, 2005, we had to basically rewrite the sign code because of a case that was brought by a billboard company, uh, attacking the city's old sign code. Um, so there was a question in that case about, did the city's old code operate to just permit a certain class, a certain amount, specifically permit signs and then prohibit all the rest, or did it kind of operate in the reverse and say, uh, only those things that are prohibited, you can't do, but you can do anything that's, that's, that's not prohibited? And the reason for that is because there was some, some confusing language in different sections that seemed to indicate both things. So, we've written this and expressly say it, that if it isn't specifically allowed in this code, you can't do it. Um, so with this, I, again, tried to make it tight where, you know, we're only talking about signs in the right-of-way, and they've gotta be government-owned. So if you don't, and even furthermore, if you're talking about a utility poll, you had to have the written authorization of the owner. So I don't, you know, even somebody that was in a commercial zone that wanted to go out and got authorization from PGE for a, uh, for a, a sign on a, on a, on a poll, we would say, well, one, it's in the right-of-way, and we don't allow signs in the right-of-way unless they're government signs, and, you know. So, I don't think it would make any difference. Thank you. If there are no other questions, then I would open it up, uh, for any public testimony. Uh, just remind folks to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Doesn't sound like there's any public testimony tonight. Uh, staff recap, I don't think there's really any need for that, since we didn't, uh, have anything to, um, discuss relative to public comments. Uh, my recommendation tonight is that you would close the public hearing, uh, talk about it, uh, to the extent you want to, um, discuss either changes or concerns you have, and then, uh, have a call for, uh, the first reading. If that's unanimous, like I said, uh, the vote for that first reading is unanimous, then you can choose to have the second reading tonight as well, and the amendment would be effective in 30 days.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Public meeting is closed?
You want to bang that gavel?
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Very important legal point.
Okay. And I guess the next thing we need to enter, term motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
Council discussion.
Oh, council discussion.
If there is any.
Is there any council discussion on this?
I like it. Um, I've seen a number of small communities that have the banners throughout their main street, and I think it's a great opportunity now that we've got the opportunity to do it.
I agree.
I'd just like to ask one question. Uh, Doug talked about leaving B and F when they both say, at least one says the same as the other. Uh, if we really want to leave B in there, it's strictly a question in that, one of the comments I've heard while I was in planning commission, and I've heard since then, is that we're trying to make the codes more understandable and, uh, such to, to the public citizens, and if that B should be taken out, because, uh, just raised another question, if I look at that and say, what's the difference between that and that?
I, I would, I would, instead of taking B out, um, I would merge F into B. I know it's sort of the same thing. B sort of establishes the authority of the, of the, of the city to have signs in the right-of-way, and F sort of says, with respect to those signs, these things don't apply. So, I think it's, I think it's important to still have, whether it's B or, the subsection doesn't bother me, but I'd want to keep that language, government-owned or maintained signs in the public right-of-way, and if the council thinks, uh, and I'm fine with that, believe me, I, I don't, one way or the other, it doesn't, uh, I don't have a, 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 a big opinion about it. I can merge essentially the, the substance of F into B. That would get rid of, that would get rid of F.
That would make B feel better.
I think it would not be quite so confusing for somebody to just pick it up and try and understand it.
No problem.
I'm good with moving it all to B, simplifying it. So do we need, do we need to-
No, that, you can keep that for the record. What I would recommend then is what we do is I'll, let's just do the first reading tonight, assuming you, everybody thinks it's worth passing, uh, and then I'll, I'll make that change, and then at your next meeting, you can just have a second reading. You don't have to go through another hearing, you don't have to have anything. It would just be a second reading with that change. That way you can see it, too.
So, I could, uh, you want me to make a motion to, um, approve the first reading of the ordinance?
As amended.
As amended?
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay, so-
After the reading?
So there's no more discussion. I think that the next question would be, uh, the, the mayor, uh-
Will entertain the motion?
Entertaining a motion for the first reading, yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance with the proposed amendment.
Correct.
So motioned.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
There we go.
Thank God.
You're doing great. Good doing your job.
Could you hit the gavel a little bit less?
It's a field thing. You're not getting tired. All right, let's move to regular agenda number eight, the Meldron Bar Off-Leash Dog Park fencing quotes.
Mr. Mayor, going to call Public Works Supervisor Scott Tabor up to the mic in a moment, but just to give some background, council several months back had asked the Park and Recreation Committee to find a new, better-suited location for a dog park within Gladstone. They've identified a piece of property on the other, the opposite side of Doll Beach Road from the community gardens in Meldron Bar Park. The next step was to obtain bids to move the fencing from the previous site at Valley View to here, and with that I'll have Public Works Supervisor Tabor present those bids to you.
Mayor, council, the, I asked a contractor to give me a cost estimate for removing the fence from the Valley View site, and also the, about a thousand feet or more of fencing to complete the fencing within the suggested dog park site, and since that bid came in at over ten thousand dollars, we went to put out bids to three different companies to get a, a complete competitive bid. I think Rick's Custom Fencing, McDermott's Fencing and Construction, and Pacific Fence. Rick's Custom Fencing did not submit a bid. McDermott was at thirty-five thousand and some dollars, excuse me, and Pacific Fence came in at seventeen thousand five, whatever it is on there. This is also the most logical place for a off-leash dog park. If we choose not to accept the bid, then we probably should not have a dog park, or an off-leash dog park at all, because you can't have an off-leash dog park without a fence. So, it's, it's the most suggested site, the people who have spoken went to our Parks and Recreation Committee, they all endorsed it. I think it's the most logical spot for the off-leash dog park, and I, I hope that you will approve this bid. I'll take any questions.
I'm, I'm curious, you said in your report and also just now about that we need to have it fenced to have an off-leash dog park. West Lynn doesn't, so I was curious as to-
I think of the liabilities because of the multi-use of Meldron, of Meldron Bar Park with cars going by the road. I think that, I'm not familiar with West Lynn, but being closely adjacent to a road, from Meldron Bar Road to Doll Beach, the traffic generated by the community gardens and just daily users, I would not want to be responsible to have a dog park without a fence, and especially off-leash. I think it's just a courtesy to the animal to make sure they're fenced and confined.
Scotty, the question I have is, and I've been in this thing from the very start, you know, all of us have-
I think so.
Originally, we, we promised the guy that we had the problems with that we would put a buffer fence in, and he asked twice, and it never did go in.
That was my bad.
Then he finally said, get it out of here. What would happen if we put a buffer fence in there now? Is he, I mean, that wouldn't, I know it was because of his children, and-
I, I, it's, it's not so much the, the buffer fence, other than the land use that is, that is for single-family dwelling.
That's right.
That was the reason why we could not continue with the off-leash dog park-
Okay, I forgot about that.
... that time plan, so I, it was my bad on both parts, the late fencing, and also not researching more into the, uh, uh, land use on that.
Right, okay, now, yeah, I forgot about that one.
Everybody kind of assumed it was just a, well, there's a park here, should be a park there, so it's, you know, the assumptions will come back and bite you. It was, been a great learning experience, and I would like to see an end to it with a off-leash dog park in its proper place, so...
Well, just a couple of issues, Scott, and, and I think, since I wasn't here, but I've heard about this dog park thing, I, I'm kind of, and maybe someone can educate me, have we done, in order not to get bit again, have we done enough homework in the area about, I mean, because you hear about it all the time, what is it going to do to the wastewater, the runoff, and all these things, all the, all the things that may come up later after we build it, and then we've got to shut it down and, and do this kind of thing?
I, we, that question was brought up by Mr. Mercero during the, the initial talking of the Meldron Bar site. There's not going to be that much, we do supply bags for dogs, I mean, the amount of off-leash dogs down there right now is, is tremendous. People are very good about picking up the dogs' waste, so I think that's an important thing, and as far as waste for going into the river, I think that would have to be a tremendous amount of dogs to do that.
I, I don't, I don't, hey, I don't disagree with you. I, I think they're the best policed areas around when, when people are in, confined, and they have dogs, they want to make sure it's clean. My issue is, is somewhere down the line, someone gets a wild hair and says, hey, you guys didn't do EPA studies, you didn't do this, you didn't do that, have we reached out to any of those organizations and said, here's what we're thinking about doing, is this cool, not good, you want to look at it, you want to give us-
We wouldn't fall into those categories unless we were in water. If we were in water, then we would have to go to the, uh, uh, land use planning for, Division of State Lands, excuse me, for permission to do that. This is, uh, yes, it's in the floodplain, but there's no structures going to be there. There's no other jurisdiction that we would have to answer to for utilizing that park in that manner.
Let me put it this way, it may be a different version of this, even though we may not have to answer, those answers we should have in our hip pocket so that when someone does complain, we say, hey, we, we reached out to DEQ, EPA, they say it's no issue, it's no issue, and, and solve it right then, rather than now having to shut it down till we bring them out, that's all I'm saying.
The only issue with DEQ is, at Meldron Bar would be our recycling area that we utilize, because we're taking sweepings from the street, leave pickup from the street, recycling in there. We're looking at engineering a plan right now to make sure that we will fulfill all of the needs, requirements for DEQ. The last time I talked to DEQ over our, our, what we do at Meldron Bar, they thought we had an excellent site down there. I would suspect that we would hear the same from them even if the dog park was over there. Because there's not running off into any stream or waterway, because it percolates into the ground, any liquid waste, physical solid waste are hopefully picked up by the property owner or the dogs' owners. I don't see where that would become an issue.
That, that's, that's an opinion, have you, have you asked specifically?
I can certainly go back and ask.
Is it a phone call or two enough to alleviate that issue coming up later on?
Uh, do, DEQ, Corps of Engineers, or-
You could think of, that you could get to check the box and say, I've talked to so-and-so at such and such a place, and they're, they're good with us. That's all, that's all I'm concerned about that end of the day.
I can contact Doug Drake, who would be, we report to in those areas, and ask him those questions on that. If I get a good response, would it be too much to ask if council would want to approve that? And if there's a negative response from that agency, then we can ex-nay on the dog park, or you want to wait for next meeting to come back on this?
No, I, I think we should hear back from you, and, and, I mean, either way, I mean, I don't think, let's put it this way, if they say, hey, we don't like it, we want it forty feet further back, that's all I'm concerned about. And once we get them to say they're good, we're good, and we don't have to answer that question after the fact, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, I can, I can most certainly do that.
And then the other, the other part I wanted to talk to the council about and everybody else is, you know, the dog park thing, the seventeen thousand dollars for the fence is an expense. I think this is an opportunity for us to maybe mobilize, if I remember right, from when it originally was at Valley View, there was a lot of signatures to get a dog park in. I mean, could we not use this as an opportunity to get this volunteer force, cut the labor cost out of the equation, and just deal with material which would greatly reduce the price of this thing? Make it an event, make them ownership of this thing, you know, they've helped construct it. We would, you know, we'll bring city workers in to supervise it, to make sure the holes are in line, and, and we can get, you know, three people with two bags of cement, and three people with two bags of cement, and, and it could be their dog park, and then we've saved virtually probably two-thirds of the cost in, in labor.
Well, it's kind of like the play structure at the park, which we brought fifteen guys in, and one day we put the whole-
It's also, you know, staffing on, on my end of that one, there's, I've, I've got six people. Two are in the park, but you know, if, if you're, you're looking at after-hour work and, and weekend works on that one, I, I'm not disagreeing, I just want to make sure I have clarity from Pete.
And, and I think we'll talk to Pete, but, and this is why I bring it up, I think this is, what we're going to get to, if we want to get some of these parks, some of these, the nicer things that we can't afford, we should mobilize people that want to be involved in it. And if that means we've got to pay three thousand dollars in overtime for two guys who come in and work on the weekend, it's a hell of a lot cheaper than, you know, another seven or eight grand.
I can reach out to a lot of volunteer groups out there to, I mean, it-
It's just an idea. I mean, rather than say, this is an either-or proposal, maybe this is the best middle of the ground, we can make it happen.
I will do exactly what council instructs me to do on that.
What do you guys think? I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing it out, it's just an idea.
It works, because I, I used it for Max Patterson Park, and it worked well, but...
Do you know anything about the fencing around the gardens?
That is the private gardens fence, they paid that out of their own pocket.
Okay.
And we have nothing to do with that.
Yeah, I, I was just curious if you knew who did theirs, or any idea of-
They all did it in-house.
Okay, so they-
They had a, they had a work weekend, or several work weekends. We stored their material at the shop for a while, and then when there was time, they came and got it and, phew, put it down there.
Okay, so they kind of did what it sounds like-
The mayor's looking at that.
Okay.
I can certainly check with Wilderness International, solve, uh, other groups that are down there, and see if I can't get some sort of mobilized force.
If we coordinate with, with Pete, you know, and, and use us, and you, and, and get whoever wants to be involved, we just set a date, you know, once we line up the material and, and equipment to drill the holes, we just say it's going to be, May the fifteenth is Dog Park Day.
Well, and there was a-
And we go down there and get whatever we need to get, and make people feel like they're involved, and it's their park.
There was a lot of public testimony, as you mentioned, and, I mean, we could comb back through the records and see who testified on it.
Well, and I believe we do have a petition of some sort, too, with contact information that we could-
While we, while we work towards that.
Whatever darts your socks, I'll be there, yeah? I can do it, okay.
So, is the dog park a done deal?
Well, we, I think we-
We've got it out of ourselves, I think.
This is, well, this is staff questions, and then we'll take public testimony, and then we'll have discussion among council.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, very good. Any other questions? Okay. Do that? So now's the time for public testimony on it?
Sure.
That's a good question and answer. Yes, sir, state your name and address, please?
I'm Dave Cruz, 17350 Crownview Drive in Gladstone. I spend my Monday, Wednesday mornings in Marius Young Park, and I coordinate all the volunteer activity. So, that fence is absolutely necessary. All the problems we have at Marius Young are because there's no fence, and it's the poop problems, the whatever. And, and I'd say your biggest expense in is chilling and buying the supplies for the poop banks, because Wes Lynn's always complaining about that. So, but that's, having a dog park without a fence is just all kinds of problems.
Thanks.
And we, and we already have a, a dispense, bag and dispenser there where the park is proposed to go.
Okay, okay.
And, and the staff does a great job at, in keeping it supplied.
The, the biggest problem with Marius Young Park, since there's no fence, everybody assumes the whole park is dog-free. So, and you don't, and you don't want that in Meldron Bar.
True.
Mr. Cruz, can you make sure that you sign in for having testified? Thank you.
Anybody else, any other public testimony?
Uh, we need to have more discussions before we-
Sure. Um, I think, do we need to close the public hearing and then have discussion?
It's no need to have a, in this case, I don't think it's a hearing, so I don't think there's any need to close.
Uh, I would like to have some more discussion. One of the thing, I've got several questions. I mean, we've got BMX talk about down at the park, the dog park. I agree that is probably the best place for a dog park. My question is, is that the best use of that park space? I really think before we go spending seventeen thousand dollars here, seventeen thousand dollars there, I think we need to direct city staff to get our park's master plan on the books, get it started, and get it completed, so when we do spend money, we're standing, we're spending it with a purpose of an end goal, and we know what that end project's going to be. I've seen piecemeal year after year, well, we, let's just do this, and then let's just do that. I don't know if there's any financial reasons that we couldn't start a park's plan, master plan, right away. I don't know if there's logistic reasons that we couldn't, but I guess I would like to ask staff if it's a possibility to get started on a master, uh, park's master plan right away, what the downside would be, and so we can spend our money with purpose.
Right. Well, we'd have to issue a request for proposals, obtain those, get them back to council for a selection, negotiate a contract for the work, and I haven't priced out a park's master plan at this point, so I'm not sure what ballpark we're looking at as far as what the fee might be. There could be some general funds money available to do that, so it is, to answer your question, it is possible to move forward with the, with the park's master-
Do you believe we have a need for it?
It, it's on my list for master plans, of what we need. It's a little further down the list, but it is important.
Say a couple of things on that. I agree with Pete on that. If council chooses to look at a master plan, I've been kind of proponent on this for, for many years, Meldron Bar Park is a regional park. Sixty-two thousand voters a year use that facility. We do get compensation from the state marine board, but there's a lot of revenue that we could generate if they're looking at some sort of day-use fee for that area. I would like council to consider that if they're going to look at a master plan, so that we can take a lot of the burden out of the general fund for park maintenance, and maybe be self-sufficient through that time. I don't have all the answers, but I think that's a, a very viable way of generating revenue. Doesn't have to be a lot, it could be easily implemented, but I think that's one of the things we should look at when we're looking at a master plan for our parks. My two cents.
Thank you.
And I think on a master plan that we should wait until the council retreat at the end of the month and decide where that fits into our, our budgets and our priorities and stuff, and maybe like Pete says, it is further down than, than getting the sewer master plan done, or getting the city hall police station done. I think that's something we need to wait till the end of the month, get our agendas all figured out, get our priorities figured out, and go from there.
And I don't think I would argue that, but I would, as far as this proposal tonight, I hate to push things off, but I think until we decide that, I would like to see us wait on making a decision on this.
Well, I think we're going to make a decision on this till next month, to begin with now, because we're going to wait for Scott to come back, is my understanding.
Mayor, I, I am concerned that Meldron Bar Park has become kind of a catch-all for all kinds of things. I'm not sure that they all mix well, I'm not sure they're all appropriate uses of a city park, and I would like to see, whether it's a master plan or something else, more thought put into what exists there now, and the dog park, and whatever else. I know the fire department wants to, uh, wants to put a hose clean-out area down there, that was one of the many things that have been talked about. And I think that we should, I think we should look at that in more of a holistic way, and not be doing this piecemeal. And I'd, I'd like to see this put off until we have a better understanding of that.
Well, to talk maybe for some of the people that want the duck park, just a reminder to the council, does the council know when this project started?
When, talking about dog park in general?
Original Valley View.
About four years ago.
March 2011. So I'm sure we can have a few more meetings and a few more discussions and whatever, but see- but seems to be following the government away. Let's talk a while, and maybe a little bit more, so...
And I can address that, because I've had this discussion, and we're kind of caught in this, because I don't like putting things off myself. But in light of what we know we want to try to do at our retreat, I'd ask, I guess, a little bit of leeway from the people and from everyone else involved to let us get our legs under us and come up with some of these ideas. Putting this off until we have a priority, till we have some goals set, till we see if we want to spend money on a park master plan, fee-based entry, just give us a little bit of time. I'm all for a park, I'm all for a Dog Park, but just give us a minute. And I know it's been dragging on a while, but I can assure you, I'm not the kind of person, and I don't think many of us are at this point from the discussions, that we're going to try to put things off too long, because that doesn't do anything for anybody. So I'm with you, but let's try to be patient and just put this in the hopper where we're going with all the other things we have to address. You good with that? Everybody okay with putting it off till we come back after our retreat and set it on an agenda, maybe in February, or March, or whenever we hit the priority list? Yep?
Sounds good.
Do I have to hit the gavel? No. Give me a thing there. Maybe a movement or something.
Just don't hit it too hard.
All right, item number nine.
Waking you up down there?
Item number nine, public works organizational study.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, as many of you know, after going through the master plan exercise on stormwater and water, everyone has a sense of the investment that the city has in its infrastructure. Beyond that, we also have sewer and roads, and parks, and, you know, even facilities. What I'm recommending to city councils is that we engage in a public works organizational assessment, and that assessment would look at everything from departmental management, staffing, the use of engineering services, preventative maintenance practices, capital project management, and if at all possible, I'd also like to fold facility management under the public works umbrella, and have that group, whatever consultant we hire, take a look at that also. The pros to the approach include identifying best practices. We're getting pressure from our insurance company and, you know, the public in general to do more preventative maintenance. From the insurance company, it's coming more on the side of sewer preventative maintenance. There's a lot of money wrapped up in equipment that we need to look at. Some of the preventative maintenance might include vectoring sewer lines and whatnot. A vector truck, for instance, costs in the range of $300,000. We have very old street sweepers that are going to be, need to be looked at at some point. So there's a lot of money wrapped up into this whole situation. When you look at other organizations of like size and a little bit bigger, we are in a class by ourselves, the way we're operating. And I believe some of it went back to the previous administration's philosophy, you know, let's fix a pipe when it breaks. We're getting to the point now where we need to be more proactive. We need to ensure that our investments in the infrastructure are going where they need to go. We need to ensure that we're planning out capital projects, not just one year into the future, but several years into the future. I'm recommending right now that city council consider my proposal to authorize such an organizational assessment to be done. I'm looking for feedback from council as to what you think is important, what it should cover, should it even be done. So I'd like to have that discussion now.
One of the questions I have is timing. Several years ago, I think the discussion started about a public works director. And I think in the, I would assume that in our organizational assessment, they're going to come up with the same thing, one of the same things we already know, is we need a public works director, with an engineering degree or background, and quite a few things. So my question is, if we was to do this sort of assessment, and then turn around and hire a public works director, and that director did not agree with the organizational assessment, and then we needed to do another one with this type of guy, would it make any sense at all to start looking for a public works director, and then have him work with a consultant for our organizational structure, to build a team, rather than to try and build a team and then bring a coach in? Just a question, I don't know the answer.
Well, and there's no one way to do this assessment. There definitely could be value by having a qualified person that we've vetted and believe has the experience to guide the city in this manner. We're also paying for some of that expertise if we do hire a consultant. You're right, there could be risks that if we do the assessment first and then make a hire as such, that there could be some disagreement with the assessment that was done, and changes may have to be made. We've already, you know, put out the city dime for that consulting work to be done. So I think either way you go, you know, backing up, I think there could be some value by identifying, well, first of all, city council would have to identify, do we want a public works director? My discussions with public works supervisor Scott Tabor, I think we're in agreement that best practices indicate that most cities of our size do have an engineer at the helm of the public works department, and that would be a good idea. So I'd like to hear other city councillors' input as to, you know, what they think of that option.
What is the salary range for a public works director?
I don't know that at this point.
Steve, can you pull your mic up a little closer?
Sorry, I thought it was...
Right. So you asked, what is the salary range? The first steps if we're considering going down that road, we'd need to look at other jurisdictions, what they have for position descriptions, salary ranges, see what the market is. That would be the first step.
And where would the money come from, where would the funds come from to pay that salary? I mean, do we have place in the budget for that right now, or...
It is not budgeted right now. When we put together, you know, we're just about ready to start on next year's budget now. The salary would come out of the separate public works funds, such as sewer and stormwater, water, parks, street, so it would be shared among those different funds. But again, I, you know, I don't know what that salary and benefit package would be financially at this point. There could be, there would be some offset, too. We contract out a lot of engineering services at this point. If we hire an engineer to run the public works department, I don't think we'd get rid of all contracted engineering services, but there are a number of items that could help offset that salary.
Pete, do you have any idea what that, generally, what that means in dollars, like eliminating 60% of the work we farm out?
I don't have those numbers in mind right now, but, yeah, I'd have to, I'd feel better about it if I could run a financial analysis and report back.
I'm thinking it would be to our advantage, because Scott has indicated, you know, that he's looking at retiring in a couple of years. If we were to be able to bring somebody on board sooner than later, that'd give him more time to work together, so that there'd be a smoother transition with his knowledge of having worked here for a couple of years. That would be a benefit to the director and to the city.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you. Scott has a huge amount of institutional knowledge. I think we just gave him his 35-year certificate for being with the city. And as some of you know, and some of you will find out when you do departmental tours, he can walk down the street and tell you what pipes in the ground, and how big it is, and what issues they've had in the past.
I don't like the barge jam, but...
Please. I agree with Pete. Even if you're looking at a director of public works, you're still going to have to look at a reorganization of public works. A little brief history, when I started here, just after the wheel was developed, that was a joke. There were 14 working people at public works, not including the foreman, mechanic, and director of public works. Now, I'm not saying public works needs that, but what public works needs is to be redepartementalized, so that you have specific people working these departments. When you're looking at investing a large sum of money into a vector of $350,000 plus, you want that machine working all the time, and you want people responsible for that machine in those departments, so that it's always cared for. We've had a very good record of having long-lived equipment at public works. We still have a 1970 F-650 we still use. But we have to look at putting people in those departments, so that they're responsible and can do a complete maintenance and preventive maintenance for our infrastructure. Right now, we're just a knee-jerk reaction. If it's broke, we'll fix it. We do, you know, very basic maintenance. We need to develop more on that. And I think that's what we need to look at for a redevelopment of public work.
Look at your manpower. You had 14 plus three administrative people, and now what have you got? A half of that, maybe? Not even half.
We've been cutting more than half.
Yeah, there's six staff members and...
I have six full-time staff members.
Six versus 14.
For the entire city's streets, water, sewer, and parks. So, I mean, we cover a lot of territory. When leaf season's here, two-thirds of my crew is out picking up leaves.
Oh, yeah.
And if something happens in the middle of the night, you know, we do respond quickly. We try and get as much in as we can, but, you know, if it's during the day, we have to stop everything else and direct our focus, our attentions on that emergency. We cover emergencies very well. I'm very proud of my crew. They're very talented. I think at one time, I estimated, we have over 130 years' experience between all of us down there. So they're very knowledgeable about the infrastructure in town and what goes on. It can be improved. And they all agree with that.
Well, I think we're very quick at criticizing what you guys do, but then you look how far they're spread out, and how they're trying to share jobs. They're doing a good job of what they've got available.
I have a very talented group of people there. But we can do better. And I think if we redevelop the priorities and redepartementalize public works, and have those specific people who have those really good talents in those departments to focus on them and not just everywhere else, you're going to get more for your buck on that.
So I guess I'm looking for direction from council. We've heard the idea of doing the preliminary work for a public works director. Is that consensus? Would you like me to do that and then report back?
The council is saying that they once had a director, many years ago. What happened to that position?
Scott?
Yeah, my question to Pete was, you had mentioned that originally, you know, the 14, you also had a public works director. What happened to that position?
He had a disagreement with Leonard Strobel, and he was fired.
Okay. That answers that question.
Well, I'll only weigh in saying that I was, I think the money's better spent. I don't think there's any disagreement we need with what we are looking at doing from infrastructure-wise. We need a public works director. There's no getting around it. So I'm kind of in agreeance with this. Maybe we start going in that direction, get him on board, and then move on to the consulting. He can work with him. This is what we see happening. This is the way we can reorganize. I guess my only question is, he would run, then he would be responsible for all the big projects that we maybe got coming up.
Yes.
That's it, basically.
I think that's really what Scotty wants, too. He'd like to see that happen.
I'd like to see the numbers on that.
Right.
Yeah, there's just some engineering breakdown on what...
I would propose that I bring back to council a financial recap, a position description, you know, a salary grid that looks like it's in the market, and some analysis of, you know, what engineering services we're contracting out now, what's the potential savings. So I'll prepare that for you, and we'll have that discussion.
Perfect next council meeting, do you think? When's our next one? February?
Well, I believe we're going to have one on the fourth Tuesday, if we can have a quorum present. We have a couple, I'd like to hold a work session talking about code compliance and code enforcement. And we also have an instructional video from our insurance company for new city councillors that we thought might be beneficial at this point in time. So we would like to meet...
The affleck duck.
We would like to meet on that fourth Tuesday, if possible. I won't be able to have that information regarding the public works director by that time, but I could for the first meeting in February.
Which would be the 10th. We good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, the 10th. So then we need to agree that we're going to meet on the fourth Tuesday? Is that what you want?
Well, usually, we have that reserved, so if there's consensus that we should have that meeting, we'll just have it. And I'll also be, just a heads up, I'll also be sending out an email to council to identify a date for Budget Committee meeting to do our mid-year budget review. So that is also coming.
Yes, please. You like the podium a lot.
Since we're on public works, I have contacted NCCWC, our water provider, and have set a date for the 27th of this month, at 10 o'clock, for a tour of the facility where we get our water. And, you know, for the new people on board, I'd like to, for people who haven't been there in a while, to come out, and we can get you all over there and go through a tour of that. I'm also trying to get a scheduled tour for the Water Environmental Services Treatment Facility across the river there. And they're willing to meet with us. If you all can consent to a time, I can schedule that time, and we can have a full tour of that facility. I think it's important. You need to know where we get our water and where it goes when we're through with it.
If you'd do me a favor, just shoot an email to Pete, so he can distribute it.
I will, yeah. I'll do that.
On both those meeting dates.
Right. Okay. But just come up with a date for the Tri-Cities, and we'll work that out. I won't bother you again tonight.
We'll see.
All right. So we agreed fourth Tuesday. Everybody good with that? Len, you looking?
Yeah, that's okay. I'll be there.
Tom?
Most likely, I've got it open.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right. Everybody here is good? So, yeah, fourth Tuesday, let's do it. Okay, on to number 10, Gladstone Public Library Policy Manual.
Right. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm going to ask Library Director Irene Green to come up and address council on this item. She's been working long and hard on this, and I'd like to have her do the presentation, if that's okay.
Counsel, I did meet with Ken Seetman yesterday. He did have a few changes of the policy manual... He did have a few changes of the policy manual. What we're required by the Oregon Library Association to have set policies through the new standards, so we've been going through each of the standards step by step and making sure that each of the policies are covered, and also to give clarification to staff. They have been operating for the past number of years without really good guidelines for them to go by when, in working with the public. And I think this really gives a really good structure. It's good public service. It's good communication with the public to they, so they can have the guidelines of what the library does require. These guidelines, this policy is also required by the Oregon Library Association to be posted on the library's website, so the public will have access to all these. I don't know if any of you've reviewed it. Do you want me to go over some of the changes, Councilman, that you've been through?
If you'd like to.
Sure, okay. The first area that, there were a couple of changes that Councilman Seetman went over with me, and one of the ones was just on page ten-nine, which is members trustees. This was actually taken and pretty much copied paragraph by paragraph by, for the bylaws of the Library Board. There was, he would, we recommended, it does make a lot of sense, instead of using the word trustees in several of the paragraphs, to just make it continuous and refer to them as board members. So, I would like to make that change in there. So, that's the one thing. I think there was a typo also on the word that was missing on the very first paragraph. And where it says officers, again, that was also part of the way it was stated in the bylaws of the Library Board, and there was a change in there that we thought it maybe should be clear that says that the officers of the board shall be a chair and a treasurer, so that will be changed. There was one really good point that he had brought out also that when we were talking is that the Library Board is the only committee, I guess you want to say, where they actually make a recommendation to city council as who should be appointed on the board. So, that might be a discussion that you all would want to have in terms of, we've always looked at the boards, recommended somebody, and you've nominated them, whereas a lot of the other committees, the actual nominations are presented to city council for you to choose. So, that could be a discussion if you wanted to do any changes in that. On page ten-twenty-one, there was some definition that he didn't, he recommended, too, which talked about lucky day. A lot of people don't know what lucky day collections are in our libraries, and this is pretty much standard throughout Clackamas County. And basically, a lucky day collection is a book or a DVD that contains new and bestselling titles with specific limitations. So, the limitation would be, there's only two titles that you can check out. The loan periods for those are two weeks for books and one week for a DVD, and you can't place holds or renewals on it. It's something that you come in, you see it, and if it's a bestseller or a brand-new DVD that was just released the day before or something, you can check it out. So, it's, and it's noted in the catalog as lucky day with that. Let's see. The other areas, I think that he mentioned was page ten-twenty-three, that it was referred to under six point three point two lost materials on the second line, and there's just a late fee, and we're going to change that to make it consistent to the overdue charges with that, so the customers don't get confused with that. The other areas, there was a typo, I think, on nine point five, which I want to fix there. But on page ten-thirty-one, and this was a legal question he brought up, that the city attorney might want to talk to the, ask, and I know in the past, we've had this in other policies where I've worked, but the library reserves the right to inspect an individual's belongings or his backpacks, so that might be something the council might want to look at. From my understanding, it's very similar to when you're in a store, that if you're suspected of shoplifting, you can ask to look into their parcels. Once they leave, you cannot. But that, I think, talks about getting clarification from legal counsel on that. The other area was in the behavior policy. This was a really big endeavor that Clackamas County took on through the county libraries, was the behavior policy and the urge to address some of the issues that go on in the library. The one thing that I do want to change, because we just wanted to adapt Clackamas County's policy, and when we did adopt it, in the ratings here, we did refer to Clackamas County several times, so we're going to change the wording on that, whereas the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners would then say Gladstone City Council, the county library would replace with city library, county staff will replace with city staff, Clackamas County with city of Gladstone, Clackamas County will replace with Gladstone Public Library, county administrator will replace with city administrator, and the county will replace with city throughout those. So, it'll be rewritten with that in there. And I believe that was all the changes that Councilmen had in there, but I had noticed those.
Yeah, now, when you rewrite that, or you're talking about, then you wouldn't be adopting their ordinance in this. You would have another ordinance rewritten, just like this, with the name changes you talked about.
Correct.
You'd bring before us, and then that would be incorporated.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That makes sense.
And I don't know if any of you other had any questions?
Irene, has anybody told you how good a job you did?
Oh, thank you.
It took notable, a lot of work.
Thank you, yeah. It was. Quite a bit of detail in there, and it's just a great referral to for staff to go to, and, you know, we've been using it as a draft right now, just trying to accumulate the information, finding standards, because a lot of it does differ within different cities with how they do. Clackamas County is trying to get some things coordinated, but with each city wanting to be their own independent, it does cause some diversity in terms of some of the policies.
Super job.
But I think, yeah.
At least from my opinion.
No, I agree, and I was curious, besides us reading through this, who else has reviewed it? I know staff has, obviously.
Staff has, and the Library Board has reviewed it several times and has approved it. So, we're waiting for approval from city council, but I'll make the changes first. And the city attorney would have to also review it. We did have Shane Alda look through it initially and go through some of the suggestions, and we did incorporate a lot of that in there, but it would need a final legal review.
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Since you brought it up, can you go over again the differences in how people are appointed to the library advisory board and what the purpose for those differences are?
That, I can't tell you the purpose of it. I just know that that is in the bylaws of the library, that they repost it, just like all the other committees, it's posted through the city. People apply for it. The applications are given to the library at the board meeting. They review the applications, and they make a suggestion to city council as to who should be nominated.
So, does city council see all the applications, or do they only see the one that you recommend?
I believe they see.
I believe we include all the applications, that's my understanding.
And then we recommend one out of the applications.
Typically, the board has recommended to the council, which the council accepts generally the recommendation, however, they still have the right to ask for more questions like, gee whiz, I didn't see this or did any of this. And they may disagree totally and choose somebody else, but...
I'm just concerned if that might limit people's applications. Maybe they don't know you or know the board. They might have something to offer, but they don't apply because they're worried they're going to have to be recommended to city council.
Certainly, it sounds a bit different. Well, it's something for council to love that. I guess they would have to amend the bylaws for the Public Works.
If that were changed at some point, what would your opinion of that be?
It's fine. I mean, I like continuity throughout the city with some of those things. It'll be fine with me.
I would like to echo Counselor Mercer's comments. This was a lot to read. I couldn't even imagine being the one that wrote it.
How many times?
Several.
I think, I think you're going to have, with just very minimal changes, I think you're going to have a great document. I think you did a great job on it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. It talks about in here, the library either being essential, enhanced, or exemplary, and then there's a bunch of, there's several pages of standards. Is that something that it's going to be filled out at some point, or what's the purpose of this?
It's a checklist. The purpose, the, what the, the Library Association just approved this in two thousand and fourteen. This is a new document compared to the other standards that they used. They didn't want to have libraries set at, depend on the economic levels of them, to always, to never meet certain criteria. What this is, is something for them to go through to see if they meet the essential standards. It is like a checklist, and that's basically what you can go by. These are the essential requirements that libraries should have, and you should have the essential requirements in there. If you go to the next level of it, it'll have the same requirements, but maybe a little bit more definition until it.
Where does the library meet right now?
We're pretty much of a mixture. Now that we're getting a lot of these in there.
I saw most of them were.
Yeah, I think we're hitting most of the essential requirements with that. We do have a few, like something, I have to look through this, but there are a few.
Cool, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you very much.
Is she going to do number eleven also?
Probably.
Yeah, if you want me to stay up here for that, sure. Okay. I think, when I went through this also, again, with Councilman Seetman yesterday, he did point out, I wanted to thank Chief Pride, because he really did give us a lot of guidance in trying to formulate this policy, and Counselor Mercer for giving a lot of guidance, because I was pretty much lost in the beginning of where to go with it. So, we really used that, and with the senior center, it gave us a good stepping stone for it. I hope I've covered most of the areas in it. I do know that there was one area in number five administration under four, that Councilman Seetman thought we should have some defined, what the defined relationships are with the city council, the city administrator. And I did work on that a little bit today, actually, and a lot of it was taken from the council guidebook. You could get a lot of that information out of, so I do have that written down. It's kind of lengthy, but I will add that to it. And I didn't know if you had any comments on...
I've got one on page eleven eighteen, item nine B, and you simply made a comment, I shouldn't say simply, she's got fifteen items behind it or whatever, but the, on the one, "The Gladstone Public Library provides safe, comfortable, friendly, and inviting facilities conducted to library use." I think that's what we want to do. I'm sure that's your goal, and from looking over there, what you've already done, I'm sure that's happening. But my thought was, you should put the word goal or requirement or something in there other than the fact that it isn't back wonderful.
Not there yet.
The goal is to get it there.
What number was that? Page eleven eighteen?
That's the main paragraph on B.
Okay.
Or actually, it's fifteen of your.
Got it, okay. Right, okay.
Item nine B, just, just a sentence, I think could possibly be a little bit misleading.
With all that, that's true. I can adjust that, absolutely.
Other than that, I thought it was great.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
So, at some point, we probably need to have a discussion on the way the boards are formed, if we want to make it consistent with all of the other boards in the city, if we want to change the library board, or if we want to change all the other boards, or if we want to leave it where it is separate and different. The other thing that I think we might want to discuss is, this is only the second public policy that we're working on. I mean, we're working on several of them. This is the only, I believe, the second one we've seen. The first one has got some verbiage in it, and I don't remember exactly what it is, but it has to do with contact for the councilors with all levels of the department. And Irene and I talked about this a little bit, and it's kind of a council decision because we do have a council administrator process that we work under where we deal with the administration, the administration deals with the departments. We've got one policy that is basically encouraging access by all councilors to all levels, and I asked her about that, and she says, well, I don't think that's what we're, I don't know if we're supposed to be doing that or if we're not, and that probably should be a council decision. So, it's just, that would be a second part of this, that maybe we need to make a policy decision on whether we want that in our policies or whether we don't.
Well, it's here in the organizational structure already, though, maybe not just written. The city council then works through the city administrator.
Right.
Who works the library director.
Right. I understand that, and that's the way, that would be the way that this policy is.
Uh-huh.
But that's different than the other policy that we've already approved.
Which policy is that? Would that be the police one?
Police, that's the only other one we have. You know, so it's just kind of a, once again, back to the consistency thing.
Right.
How do we want our policies to be? So, I just wanted to bring that up for council for a later discussion, not tonight.
Excuse me. Some of that is addressed in the city council packet, because I was copying information today, and in the city council packet, it does state the city administrators liaison between city council and staff other than general informational requests. The primary functions of staff are to execute council policy actions and to keep the council members informed. Library staff is to take guidance and direction only from the city administrator.
Right.
So, that is in the council guidelines, so that might be something.
So, it just, we want to stay consistent, however we choose to do it, is my only thought. So, maybe have some discussion on that at a later date.
So, I'd like to approve both these policies, but would you rather see it come next month with the changes?
Well, I think we still need some legal review to be done, but we wanted to get city council's reaction to them to see, you know, is this going the right way, and apparently it is.
Looks good to me.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, item twelve, update Gladstone Public Policy on Policing.
Man, we're getting to see everybody tonight.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good job in that gavel, by the way. Jim Pride, your police chief, and Counselor Nelson was the only sitting counselor in twenty-ten, when the initial public policy on policing was enacted, after a lot of work. And Pete and I have been in discussions for some time now that it's time to go through another process as our community evolves here in Gladstone, to see if it all is still applicable, what needs to be changed, as noted in the staff report I prepared for you. So, the plan would be, is to use a similar process that we used before in vetting this through, it's a three-legged stool, obviously. It's the community, it's police staff, and it's city council. And the objective here is to create alignment in terms of what we want out of the police department. Right now, we have ten principles that guide how we do our work, and we want to make sure that, it's been five years, and we want to take a look at it and see if, you know, we want to make changes to it. And I have preliminarily formed an initial committee of people that represent different communities within Gladstone. And we have not met yet because I wanted to meet with council first, get any input, marching orders from you. I also know that you're having a retreat later this month, which may be, or may not be, I'm not sure, a topic of conversation there. So, in fact, one of the members that I asked to join this committee is Dave Cruz. And just informationally, Counselor Nelson is our police liaison. I've asked him to serve, to take a look at the policy. Sherry Hall, Steve Lights from the business community, Brian Early, one of our police department chaplains from Gladstone Baptist Church, Gladstone High School principal Natalie Osborne, and one of her leadership students. So, we have a youth contingent there. And then I'd also like to use a GPD staff member yet to be named. So, that's the initial thought going into this. Have this committee take a real hard look and get their input on it, and then also go to members of the department. Uh, have this committee take a real hard look, and get their input on it, and then also go to members of the department, to talk to them about it, every employee, and see what their opinions are. And then also go out to the community and community forums, have it on our website, have it on our Facebook, um, community meetings, see who comes. One of the meetings we had last time, we had four people show up, and it was well advertised. This time, we might get a very different draw, but the point is, we make the attempt, because process is very important, as you know. So, I'm here to answer questions, or hear your thoughts.
Well, you're right on the money. I mean, I've talked to some, I've talked to some others here, and, uh, we, the retreat thing, again, I would just ask for everybody's patience on this. It sounds like we're putting it off, but really, especially dealing with the police policy, give us a chance to give you our thoughts, our concerns, that we agree on, and then you can take that and start working that into your policy, wherever you need to work. So you, you've got some clear direction on where we'd like to see it go, or some ideas we have, and then work it up, and, you know, involving Len and coming back to us. So I'd say, you know, awesome, we're gonna get on it, but just give us, to after that thing, and we'll have some concrete stuff for you, or Pete will have it, and we'll give it to him, and say, hey, here's what they discussed, and here's what they'd like to see, and certainly, you know, come anytime and say, hey, let's talk about this. I don't, this idea's kinda out there, or whatever. I don't know how that happens, but I'm sure we could figure it out. So, that would be my suggestion. Anybody else? I mean, Len, we okay? We holding it off for another two weeks or three weeks?
Yeah, I'm gonna be part of the committee, so we're doing some work, so.
All right. Yeah.
Well, I'm, are you gonna come back and discuss this again, then?
Well, I, I think once we, after our, uh, retreat, and we come up with those priorities, goals, standards we'd like to see, then Pete can carry them forward, and say, Jim, this is what they talked about. And maybe he comes back to us and say, hey, you know, A, B, and C are doable, but D, I'm kinda not sure what you guys are looking for. And then he can then work from there. So, we're not gonna say, go ahead and start working on this policy, because it really, I think he should wait for us to give input. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, 'cause I had, I had two questions, uh, in regards to, uh, the cost impact, as to it. You mentioned about it being a significant staff time would be dedicated, but being that it's already written, I was hoping maybe you'd give a little more clarification.
Sure.
And the overtime, 'cause you're just, you know, looking and to maybe revamp what's already there. So, if you could explain, or, you know.
Sure.
Enlighten us on that, please.
Easy. So I've been through this twice, in two different jurisdictions, so I've seen it from the inside out. In the background, it's very invisible to the organization, is a lot of logistic work. Planning, preparation, conducting the meetings, speaking at service clubs, um, editing the document as we go forward, having a officer or a civilian staff member or both at the committee meetings. So they're involved in that, and they're hearing what community members are saying. That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anybody else? I'm good. Thanks, you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item number thirteen. Discussion regarding city council retreat.
I'm not gonna let you push this one off.
I wanna push this off to the next meeting.
Right.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, uh, as I've reported to you, we have, uh, a very generous offer by Mr. L.B. Day, who's a professional facilitator, and Natalie Smith has put us in contact, uh, who is, uh, willing to facilitate this meeting. Uh, but before I meet with him and set an agenda, I wanted to have a discussion with city council to make sure we address what counselors want to address at this retreat, include, include the people that should be included, and, uh, don't spend a lot of time on items that may not be as important to council. Um, what, uh, what the proposal is right now, is that, uh, and it's very loose, but at this point, I think because we have new council members, we do need to touch on our mission, vision, and value statements. I'm getting input that maybe not a lot of time needs to be devoted to that, uh, but personally, I do wanna give the opportunity to those new to the council to, you know, say, okay, I'm good with this, or, you know, let's maybe make some changes here. Uh, so I really would like to do that. Um, I think a large part of it is going to be identifying goals, and prioritizing some of, uh, those, uh, projects or issues that, that are deemed important by council. I see the majority of time being spent on that. Uh, Mr. Day also did recommend some team building activities. Uh, I'm getting some feedback that maybe that's not as much a priority for some counselors, uh, but I, I would like to hear from the council as a whole. Uh, originally, we had envisioned having department heads participating in that meeting. Uh, I'm getting some feedback that maybe we should focus just on city council, at least initially, and then if later down the line, we wanted to do another event with department heads, after councils had a, a chance to determine its priorities, you know, that could be done down the line. Uh, so I'm looking for consensus, do we include department heads as a participant in the meeting or not? Uh, Mr. Day was recommending, and I believe all counselors have said that they could attend, uh, a two-day retreat, the afternoon of Friday, January thirtieth. I believe we're talking one to five P.M. And then I need to have some discussion with Mr. Day about Saturday, the duration. Uh, but I'm, the input I'm receiving from counselors right now is that they'd like to see maybe a full day on Saturday also. The, uh, I've also had input from counselors that, uh, they would like to see the event happen someplace other than council chambers and, uh, the senior center. Uh, there are a couple of options out there, but, uh, right now, the school districts, is it called the Activities Room, in the new addition to the, to the high school, is available at little to no cost. Uh, so that's attractive to me. Uh, the other option we looked at was, uh, the Holiday Inn, next to Safeway. A conference room could be rented for two days for six hundred dollars. Um, right now, we've contacted the school district and asked for use of that facility, but I did want council to have, uh, some say in, you know, where it would be located.
I think the school district's the way to go. It's got parkings available. I went to several conferences in the new wing of the high school. Works out really well. Uh, you're not interrupted at all, at that point, in that place. Uh, and I was thinking, with the staff gonna be there, it would at least be close for them. But if the staff isn't gonna be with us, but at least parking's available, and it's close for all of us.
Is Friday afternoon gonna be an issue with, where, will school be in session?
Shouldn't be down there, 'cause the classrooms are all up on top, up the stairs.
But you... Yeah. I, I believe the assistant city administrator had some contact with the school district. Did they have any issues?
There's not any problem whatsoever, Friday.
Okay. Okay, so I, I guess I'm hearing consensus, the school might...
No, school, that's for me, I was just gonna confirm, we're talking just the afternoon of, of the...
One P.M. to five P.M.
Twenty-nine.
Right, and then Saturday.
And, and again, I, I need to say, I, I'm...
Right, okay, thank you.
I'm going to meet with, uh, Mr. Day on Friday, uh, to help, you know, to talk about what we're going to do, and provide him this input that we received tonight. Uh, so there may be some small tweaks to the schedule, but, uh, we're shooting for one to five P.M. Friday, at this point.
We've got a pretty heavy schedule for January. So, we've got one on the twenty-seventh, which is one we call tonight. Then we've got one on the thirtieth, one to five, and the thirty-first, all day. So, within, uh, four days there, we're gonna be in session the whole time, so.
Well, get paid big money's work, Len, is all I can say.
Get paid big money for this, I tell ya.
A little bit of team building.
So...
Go ahead, Kim, start.
There, uh, I think it's okay to review the city's mission, vision, and values. I think they're written broad enough that we're gonna be able to work underneath that umbrella to do, uh, pretty much anything we need to do. Um, I do agree that we should touch base on it. Um, some of the new counselors may never even have seen them. So, uh, I think that is important. Uh, we do need to spend, I think, the majority of our time identifying, prioritizing, um, goals, um, projects, and that sort of thing. The team building activities, um, I've got some real concerns. Um, and I don't mean I have, I have, it's interesting. We have got somebody here that I believe is highly respected in his field. Um, he is recommending some team building activities. He's not charging us for his time, and I, I would assume probably a day and a half seminar, he probably charges quite a bit for on a normal basis. If we're accepting his, um, that he is good in his field, and he knows what he's doing, and we're expecting him to lead us, I'm not gonna have any problem with doing some team building activities. I think it can be a little embarrassing, make us feel a little silly sometimes, but we're asking for his expertise, because if we wasn't, if, if we didn't think we needed his expertise, we'd just go meet and sit down and do something, and I don't think I wanna spend a lot of time, unless we find out as we get there, that we do need some team building exercises. Um, but I think, I think maybe we can work with that, and that can be discussed.
Well, and it, it, one of the original assumptions, when I first met with him, was that the department heads would be involved, and so I, I don't know if his, uh, recommendation was based on getting that team building exercise between counselors and department heads, so he may change his opinion on that, but I'll carry back the information I'm receiving tonight.
And so that's, and as far as the department heads, I think, I think as a council, we're gonna have plenty to work on, and I, I think there's gonna be a lot that we can do with department heads as well. But I think let's work on getting us go in the right direction, all as one unit first, and then let's incorporate them into it. Uh, the only other thing I would recommend is, um, I would like to see maybe when you meet, to set the agenda, that maybe we send the mayor and the council president as well. Um, and maybe the three of you could work with the facilitator. I don't know, I hadn't talked to him about it, I don't know if that would be acceptable to him, I don't know if it's acceptable to the council. But that would be one of my thoughts. That's all I have.
Okay.
Uh...
No, I think I agree with Kim there, as far as, especially with him offering to do this for free, that we should engage in some team building. And I also agree that, uh, right now, we've got enough to do, that we don't need to have the city staff there as well for the department heads. So, school district's fine.
Yeah. Um, what I, I would like to see is that, uh, besides, you know, going through the, uh, what's already been mentioned, um, maybe a presentation, uh, from Susan, our accounting clerk, as to, uh, the reports we get, uh, what my, and maybe from, uh, also from staff, as to what we, what type of accounting information we're supposed to get, uh, that, you know, that we have to approve on a, on a monthly basis. Um, I mean, we, we've get a list of checks, uh, check numbers and amounts, and then we've got accounts payable with, uh, check detail, accounts payable, outstanding invoices. Um, so there, there's still accounts payable, but they're different reports. Plus, there might be other reports that we might be interested in seeing, that's different than this, that would, uh, would help us.
Well, and I, and I, I think for the purposes of the, of the retreat, if, I don't think we have Susan there, 'cause then it's the department heads, and then it's...
Well, you know, I, I think this might be something that, you know, we, we could do even outside the retreat. I could provide you the reports that we generate on a monthly basis, all of the reports, um, uh, that have public information. Uh, so you'd be seeing budget versus actual, budget versus revenue, uh, you know, the general ledger. Uh, there are a number of reports that we produce on a monthly basis, that we could share with council. And, you know, I, I just know there are so many projects we want to get to.
Well, I understand that, but...
Maybe that could be the starting point, so you know what, what's out there.
Sure. Two reasons why I was, I was looking at doing this. One, unless you're taking some accounting classes, this is a bunch of numbers on a piece of paper, and names and invoices, and it doesn't, you know, doesn't make sense. It's just like when I started going through, uh, our attorney's bill, uh, last couple of years. I've had to ask, uh, first three or four times, because it's in a different language. And, uh, so, and we've got, you know, in essence, four new people on the, uh, council that probably, you know, could use a little, um, education. I mean, and it wouldn't hurt me also. And, uh, and also, in regards to maybe some, uh, like maybe another work session, um, city council asked over a year ago for a work session in regards to, uh, code enforcement, which hasn't happened yet. Granted, we've got a new council, but, um, we have a tendency of not getting some things done.
Well, and that's, we're... You know, when we come to the, when we come to this, those, besides the goal setting, and the priorities, and our list, that we'll be able to, it, it'll be transportable, so if we wanna present it. I think some of the deficiencies, or some of the frustrations, uh, will be presented, and maybe we can come to some kind of a, a plan on where we're going with that. All right. What's going on, how come this has fell through the cracks for years and years? How can we fix it? That's part of the whole goal of this thing, is, uh, I, I just think we need to just talk and get this stuff out, and then work on a plan to fix it. I mean, it, it just seems like, that seems the best way to go, and so that's why this retreat was such a big deal, so.
And I, and I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we can bring, yeah, there'd be good stuff to bring up in there.
So, in regards to, uh, the team building, um, idea, um, my experience in, in corporate meetings has been that team building is to, you know, bring shy people out of their shell, and get their input. And with the possible exception of Counselor Sickman, I don't think we have that problem, so. Um, I would like to ask, we don't spend a whole lot of time screwing around with that. Um, I would also point out that the city council, um, at its last retreat, uh, beat the mission statement, the visions, and the value statements to death, and maybe we could skip it this year, and look at it next year, um, and not spend a lot of time on that either. Um, I wanna make sure that we have enough time to talk about goals, um, talk about ideas, and be able to float them around, and, uh, wanna make sure we don't spend too much time on extraneous stuff. I'd also like to ask, as an agenda develops, maybe even if it's a draft, that we could see that, as it develops, and, uh, and provide input back to you.
Sure. And not, and not be surprised on Friday afternoon with, um, this is the agenda, this is all we're gonna do. Um, I'd, I'd kinda like to have some input into helping that evolve.
Can do.
Regarding the, uh, mission, vision, statements, and so on, uh, the council, I noticed, has asked several questions tonight, which actually are answered for most of the... several questions tonight, which actually are answered for most of those in the city council guidebook. That was one of the reasons I helped the group put that together, because there's always questions about how do we do things and so on. So regarding the board, the library board, the statements as such, which are by, are by the bylaws, it does note the actual bylaw number is in there. Regarding the senior center, any board and such, also the, the mission statement is in there, so you can review those beforehand. I would not like to, or I would like not to, let me change that, to, to spend too much time on reviewing that. However, the new people and myself can look at those and read them right out of that, and if we have a problem with it, then maybe we bring it up, you know. Otherwise, to me, the council retreat really had a couple of main missions. One, to get us together, to talk about our likes and dislikes and so on, and work together as a team, which some team-building exercises may not be totally out of question, and two, to set the goals and objectives that we would like to agree to, I'm hoping in a team manner for that to happen. Sometimes team exercises can help that to happen. Now whether this fellow does it that way or not, I wouldn't be surprised if he didn't use that type of tactic, so that's all for me.
All right. Len, anything to add, subtract? Nope?
I am curious, do we need to wear a tie?
Ties are always going to be optional, gentlemen.
I'm not sure about that. Only some people don't seem to be wearing a tie.
I'd just like to also mention that it is a public meeting, so members of the public can attend this, and we will be at least audio-recording the meeting. We will have to rent some equipment to do that, so there will be some expense for that. We'll be bringing in lunch on Saturday, and, you know, have water and, you know, coffee, things like that at, at the location, so.
I think, just to close on this whole thing, agree with what everybody says, I think the whole idea was just, you know, let's hit it, get some ideas out there, get some priorities set, some housekeeping rules, something we can agree upon and build on it. Team-building stuff, dude, we're just going to have to, I've seen those things go on forever and ever, and so.
So have I.
We're just going to have to talk to Mr. Day. I think Pete asked me if I wouldn't mind attending, meeting with Mr. Day to see what his feel is on all of this, so if you all are good with it, I'll go with Pete, meet Mr. Day, see what he has to say about team-building, we'll have a better feel for it.
I'll have a discussion with Natalie tomorrow to see if it's okay, and I, I...
Natalie Smith, 345 West Darlington Street. Just to put your mind at ease, the team-building exercises usually don't run any longer than 30 minutes. Generally, they're only about 15 minutes, they're not very long. And in regards to an agenda, that's the only way the man operates, because everything has to be very precise on how much time is allotted for each individual thing that you're going to go through that you want to achieve during sessions. He's been doing it for 38 years, so it's, he's like, he won't do one without an agenda, so everything's very timed and very precise. So I wanted to let you know, let you know that, but they're not going to be team-building exercises going for days, so, just wanted to let you know.
Great, thank you.
Well, now, Len?
Here, that problem.
Well, I, I guess we'll meet with him, but I, I'd be honest with you, this time limit thing, I don't see us saying, you've got 15 minutes to discuss police policy, you've got 30 minutes to discuss the water sewer directive.
Well, I think there will be broader categories such as developing goals, and then maybe another priority, to prioritize goals, so.
Strategic planning sessions can go on for anywhere from four to six, sometimes eight hours, depending on how large, you know, if you're looking at five years out or 10 years out, or that's going to take hours, yeah.
So, one thing that I asked about was you and the council president both going, is that work bad in deference?
It's great with me as long as it's okay for Mr. Day, and I...
Yeah, that's good. Tom, you good to come with us on Friday?
I can do that.
All right, so there you have it. And then as far as agenda, setting the agenda, I've kind of, I think we've all, at some point in time, had a discussion about this retreat, what, at least my thoughts were on it. I think most of us were in agreement on the goals and everything, so if it's okay with everyone, since we can't do it by, via phone trail, if I talk to Pete and say, here's what I think it should be, with bearing in mind what everybody, the input that I had received, and then he shoots it out to everybody, and then we can go from there and say, this looks like what I would like to see, does that make sense? Is that the best way to do it?
And I'll share all the responses, but if you could please have the responses, just go to me, and I'll share everything with city council as a whole, but I just want to make sure we don't get engaged in a, a meeting, so.
All right, and we'll try to get that, well, we'll try to do that before Friday. What's today?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, but we could do that.
Yeah, I, I think what we should do is write down our ideas, what we want to accomplish, get them in a rough draft form, and then go to the meeting Friday with that, and finalize it at that point.
Okay, all right. You're going to get with us on the 27th, this is what time we're going to meet?
Yep, yep.
All right, so, so we've talked, the city retreat, the council retreat, everybody's good, we've got a plan, we've got a meeting, we'll get some ideas out for everybody to look at and send back to Pete. So now, what time's the meeting Friday?
11:30.
11:30, yep. And I don't know if we want to meet here, it's, it's the office building across from the D M B on 82nd.
Item number 14, city council meeting considerations. So originally what this was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, feel free, jump in.
We talked about starting earlier, basically, going to 6:30, starting the meetings, if we have an executive session, we'll come earlier, this saves staff, the affiliate just hang out, and also, when we get 14 paid, 14 item agendas, we don't go to, you know, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. So that's one idea. It's been pointed out that it might take us to do a code amendment or something, so we'll have to look at that, and the other things we, there's some other ideas we'll talk about in the retreat, about time limits on input, and some other housekeeping things to do with council meetings, so that's kind of what number 14 is about. So we're not going to make a decision on the time because it looks like we've got to make a code amendment or whatever.
It might be in the council rules, I'll have to look up to see exactly.
It's in, it's actually in the code.
Anyway, just to head off the...
It's in the code. The time and date is in the code, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the code, so I saw it in there.
Actually a time, not just the date, but a time?
Actually a time and a...
I think it's a suggested time, there is, there is a written time, but for some reason it makes it kind of vague.
I'll take a look at it.
Two dot zero four dot zero one zero.
The other thing...
Two dot zero four dot zero what?
Two, two dot zero four dot zero one zero.
Yeah, should, should be held, yeah, on the second Tuesday of each month at the hour of 7:30. Easy fix, just whatever you guys would, if you want to change it, I would even propose a language that, at a, at a time and date that the council's choosing, you know?
There you go.
I'd like to, while we're working on that, right now, the fourth Tuesday is reserved for, the term just went out of my head, what is our fourth Tuesday meeting?
Adjourned meetings.
Adjourned meetings.
That's the one we got.
We've got a lot of work to do. I mean, I just soon see it just changed to a regular city council meeting. We meet twice a month, and so that's maybe something for discussion. We've got a lot of city business to do over the next several years. I think rather than waiting and finding out on Tuesday that we're going to have a meeting, I'd just soon schedule it out for the next four years, that the second and fourth Tuesday, I'm going to be tied up.
Y'all are killing me.
But just something for, to think about.
Yeah, and that, and we, I mean, that could be brought up in our little retreat, or how we want to deal with that. Okay, let's see, business, we good with that? We done on the 14th? All right, business from council?
Okay, the one thing that we got coming up on the Thursday, it's coming Thursday, is the coffee brunch for, well, dinner, I guess, for 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Senior Center for Hal Bush.
Reception for Hal Bush.
Reception for Hal Bush, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. And I guess, what's the time on the 27th?
The, the fourth Tuesday of the month will be meeting at 7:30 p.m.
7:30, okay, that's all I got. My calendar.
I don't have any business, Sickman.
For a, a discussion I had with, with Pete, and has been an ongoing discussion with Councilor Sickman and others, it appears that the Lake Oswego Tiger Water Pumping Station does not meet the design review from a planning commission, where they agreed to a structure that looked residential in nature and has other limitations. I know that Councilor Sickman has looked into this further. I want to express that I think it's so far off that a stop work order would be justified, and that's an opinion I would share, that that would be fine with me, unless some other information came forth that, that showed it as being otherwise. So I wanted again to express that a stop work order would be just fine with, with this counselor. We also had the first coffee with a counselor on, on yesterday, and I was surprised, it was a very positive turnout, there were many people came, and I marked down four topics that came up, just because I wanted to share some of the things that were said. There were concerns about requiring garbage service, there were concerns about outdoor burning of yard debris and trash, there were concerns about perpetual garage sales, and there was quite a bit of discussion about dog leash laws. I'm sure all of those will come up later somewhere else, but I thought I would share that, that those came up at the coffee with the counselor. That's all I have, thank you.
Yesterday, the Oregon Legislature went into session, and I met with Alan Olson and Brent Martin, and they're hoping to come and speak before us, I don't know about sooner, but maybe later, and are receptive to anything that, you know, needs that we might have of them, and would like to work with us in partnership and whatever comes up. There, there was no real agenda that, that was discussed, and also wanted to thank David and Brent for their generous gift, holiday gift, thank you, appreciate it.
What did you get?
That was going to be between you and I, Neil.
Should have talked that one through, Neil.
All I have is the, Christmas time, I'm always involved with the fire department and with my own fire engine, and this was the eighth year of the Santa on the Mac, and through the three nights, we collected about 250 gallons, so five 55 gallon drums of canned goods and toys that we took up to the Gladstone Food Bank. I know that last, in December, November, the city council donated $500 to the Gladstone Fire Department for their food drive, and I know they were able to help about 120 families, and they also, when they got done, they had a lot of extra toys and canned goods, but they also were able to run up to the Gladstone Food Bank at the Adventist Camp, so, Stan, thank you very much, and it was a very good year.
I just want to reiterate what, kind of what Steve said, the coffee with the counselor, I felt was a great success. There was several, several items that were brought up for discussion. One of the things that I did notice was the entire demeanor of the people that were there. They came in, they had complaints, but they did it in a positive manner. They didn't come in yelling and screaming, they actually were very thankful, I feel, that people were willing to listen to them, so I wanted to make sure and mention that. The other thing, and this is kind of for councilors that are going to be doing this, it is not a council meeting, there's no minutes taken, so we need to be really careful with that. What I did was I wrote down, at Pete's, at Pete's request, a date and a time that we had the meeting, and strictly a list of topics that were discussed, and then I've turned those into Pete, and if somebody can do that for each meeting, we can have a spreadsheet, a running spreadsheet that quarterly, six months, whenever we want to, we can take a look at this spreadsheet and see what's been discussed, is there certain things that just keep coming up over and over again? I just think it might be a good tool to have in the future. That's all I got.
Question, did you have a sign-up sheet at the coffee with the councilor so that people who came could put their name down and whatever?
We did not, but we should have, yep.
I was going to suggest that.
That's a good idea.
All right, I don't have anything, I just appreciate everybody coming, this is awesome, just keep on coming. Oh, meeting is adjourned.